As they are excluded in the bill.
Who read, read from my text, it's a little bit of a pillow, but it looks like there was no, can I have a drink?
Under population coverage. An asylum seeker or illegal foreigner.
Uh, my partner take a part of what you want to go back to.
It is stated here that they need to be given emergency health services.
What about you, Kelaufuma, and it's about pillow, but let's try it yet.
So it is not stipulated which, which is an emergency because if a person is presenting himself or herself at the health facility, there must be an emergency, especially illegal foreigners.
What do you want to, you like your handler, who will be able to tell us how many more I think about once you pass it by, so I'm happy. How about you, my, 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 it's why you need it.
And also they need to access the health facilities to receive services according to section twenty seven.
How about you, Kelaufuma, and it's a little bit of a pillow, but it looks like it's a twenty seven, yeah, my hotel.
Access, yes, and they need to be registered, blah, blah, like that, but which one is an emergency health service excluding the, um, my, my food, I thought.
Uh, it, it, it's also understandable that they should get emergency services, but it must be clear for what elements are they supposed to be treated, whether it's infectious diseases and the like.
My second last point, not waste, without not wasting any more time, um, under registration as users. Uh, after communication with the minister and the minister of home affairs, it is prescribed here that there are further requirements for a minor or a child of a foreigner to, foreigner nationals to be assisted. But if I deviate from health, we also have South African children who do not have identities because of whatever that has transpired into their lives. But as I'm in the health professional, I cannot issue them certificates, they cannot sit for a trick, and we are sitting with those people who might come and contribute in our country, but they cannot further their studies. How can they be helped because asylum seekers and foreigners, there is a, a hand stretched out for them.
Or in my, my bill, it, it was too sad, it was very limited, so I don't know, look at it, I was like, what was that, my, my thing, you know, it's about, you know, I want to be more useful, it's one thing, it's like, oh, well, I don't know, but look at it, I don't know, it's a pillow, but.
No, I was saying, our South African children who do not have South African identity.
Give me a camera, Africa, but what's next, it's all mine.
They will be raised up, but they won't sit for a trick or they won't complete schooling because of identity.
But I'm already sure, I'm, but I can't get back to me, tricky, but I'm not going to go, man, it's it's one thing.
Even if they are healthy and they need to serve in government.
The half a piece, I don't know, but look at it, I'll see, we're late, I'm, so.
So my last one is number six. My question is, in the bill, billing, I hear more often, our elderly people who are critical to this bill.
Who's the hangout, how good I'm a click, we're in, but what was your, what, billing in, now, now?
In the later age.
How about you, so, 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 huh?
If they have to undergo operations like cataract and others.
How about you, Kelaufuma, it's, 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 it's.
Because of their age bracket, they are.
Gava, Galadine, Mo, it's about, now, but I need to, I mean, yeah, it's a.
And when they go to their old age, is it going to decrease the amount or is it going to increase with the recession? I thank you.
How about you, so, 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 so.
Good afternoon, South Africa.
Can you say, can you make it, Africa, but, uh?
And all protocol observed.
Leave, we'll, 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 we'll.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Bonne nuit, bon tarde.
I come from Helbron Ministers' Fraternal.
Get, so, who, Helbron Ministers' Fraternal.
I'm the secretary.
Give me, oh, do.
And my name is Zerok Musia.
Live, it's all like, I, I know.
Zerok Musia.
Zerok Musia.
Uh, based on this NHI.
We sit there, we're, 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 we see it as a very good thing. Hey, boy, I didn't want to, uh, huh?
That will save the community of South Africa.
It's a, it's a, my, Africa, but, uh.
Now.
Do I like?
The system of health department gives us that.
It's a, my, it's a, 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 it's
in order to see the professional doctors.
Who, it's about, who, 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 who,
people have to first start from their primary healthcare, that is the clinic.
But what about you, Kelaufuma, the clinic, I'm, Bill.
That is stampeded due to the shortage of professional nurses and doctors and specialists at the local government hospitals.
Who do, so, on a lady, it's, who, she, la, no more, the clinic, it's, you, Kaba, Kalau, Sebitengha, dinga, Kalima, Nessie, uh, it's one thing.
A temporary board from the board members.
Where you got, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
If it will still be the ongoing system.
It's, and, it's, I, 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 I.
Those who sees doctors by using their medical funds.
But, but, and, 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 and,
and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, and, they are going to be obliged to undergo the stampeded services of the primary healthcare.
By, Kappa, bass, and, 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 and,
Transport of patients, that is ambulances.
The, 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 the,
and delivery of chronic medication at the primary healthcare level.
Louis, so, had, the, my, yeah, yeah, chronic, you, the, primary healthcare.
Still remain a public problem that need to be attended before the implementation of the NHI.
It's, and, 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 it's,
So till so far, we as the public.
What's, I feel, I, 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 I,
we are not convinced that the problem can come to an end.
I, 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 I,
Correct the above mentioned three points.
Look, it's, and, it's, and, it's, and, it's, and, it's, and, it's, and, it's, and,
this gives a thumb up for the implementation of the NHI.
So, now, so, that, who's our, NHI, can you, huh?
I thank you.
Yeah, Leo, thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, let me, I, 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 and I'm a representative of Afri Forum. Yeah, I could, yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah, Afri Forum.
Afri Forum is opposed to the implementation of the national health insurance.
Afri Forum, I, 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 national health insurance.
It is an unaffordable, unfree and unpractical scheme that will have ramifications far beyond the health sector.
Yes, again, I, 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 I,
Until today, there is no clear, uh, indication of what the NHI will cost.
What's, I feel, I, 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 I,
It is a policy adopted by the ANC and government without much thoughts in going into what it will do to the economy.
Kelly, I, 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 I,
The question of funding is left to Tidu, Mboweni Minister of Finance to answer, and he recently indicated that the NHI budget will be cut by twenty five percent.
Yes, I, 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 I,
This followed after the already failure of the NHI administrators and staff to spend a single percentage of the hundred and fifty million allocated for Lenin over the past year.
So, now, so, that, I, 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 I,
Moreover, there is no example of a single government entity being run successfully.
Me, I, 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 I,
Esconded has ballooned to four hundred and fifty million with no viable rescue plan on the horizon.
Do I look at it, it's, 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 it's,
SAA and Danell's problems are well documented and well published.
Let me, I, 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 I,
Provincial health departments misspent billions each year.
Provincial health departments, it's, 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 the billion, it's, I, it's, 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 it's.
The NHI fund will simply be another poorly managed, corrupt and eventually bankrupt entity dependent on government bailout.
NHI, I, 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 I,
Other sectors of the community will suffer due to money being diverted to the NHI pit.
Kaba, I, 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 I.
If the state cannot even manage the institutions presently at our disposal, how will they manage something that this large?
If I, 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 I,
The country cannot simply afford this pipe dream, and the real answer lies in approving what we already have and growing the economy.
So, now, so, I, 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 I,
Implementing NHI will do neither. Thank you very much.
Oh, can you, 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 can you,
Good afternoon.
To me, I.
I would like to thank the chairperson.
Can I, 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 I,
And, uh, let me greet the honourable MPs.
Can you make it, say, let it, it's a parliament, it, 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 it.
Uh, the traditional leaders and the political leaders.
But, I, 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 I,
And all the religious leaders.
Le, ba, I, 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 I.
Most importantly, the community that is here.
Can you make it, I, 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 I,
My name is Thula Nimbana.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I'm, 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 if you have a pleasure to talk to your neighbor this loud, I go outside and talk and talk and then come back because there's a speaker on the podium, would like to hear. If there's a pressure that you don't like to listen, please, you can wait outside and then you have a desire to come back and listen, come back, but don't disturb speakers currently making their submissions to us.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm,
Okay, thank you, Chairperson.
Yeah, Leo, I'm, 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 I'm.
Uh, before I start, I would like to clarify one thing.
Can I, 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 I,
That is, that is, we are gathered here.
Oh, I, 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 I.
To talk about something that is critical to everyone.
Oh, I, 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 I,
Healthcare is every citizen's right.
It's about pillow, but, it's, 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 it's,
So every citizen has a right to receive quality healthcare.
Kaho, I, 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 I,
So it is very important that we must be sober when we make these decisions.
Can I, 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 I,
So I'm just gonna be quick, I don't have many points here.
It's, I, 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 I,
Uh, my view is that this bill is not sustainable.
My, I, 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 I,
If you look at the current health sys-, uh, healthcare system.
How she, but, Pepe, it's about pillow, but, it's about, I, 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 I.
The healthcare system of this country is deteriorating every day and the government is doing nothing about it.
Pepe, it's about pillow, but, it's, 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 it's,
The very same people that this bill, uh, claims to be seeking to assist.
But, I, 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 I,
They are suffering every day. Our cronies have to wake up three o'clock in the morning to go to a clinic and come back seven o'clock in the evening.
But, so, I, 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 I,
And the government is doing nothing about it even though they know.
I'm, I, 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 I,
Uh, if you look at this bill.
How she, but, Bill, you know?
It is not about, uh, improving the quality of, uh, our healthcare system.
I, 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 I,
It is about money.
I'm, I, 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 I.
The government wants to access money from, uh, for an example, from the private sector and incorporate those funds into the, the, the government.
I'm, 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 I, 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 I,
While we are still talking about money, the, the current, uh, budget.
Kappa, the, 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 the.
The current budget, I think, uh, is two hundred and twenty two billion.
The, 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 the,
But the, the very same amount in, in the manner that it, it is used, it is not about really money, it is the manner that it is used, which is the, the, the problem.
Uh, how she, but, who, 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 who,
So we cannot centralize all this money because it has been proven that whatever the government touches, it gets destroyed.
I, 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 Uh, I'm, 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 I'm,
And in the manner that this bill will be implemented, that means that this will operate exactly as other SOEs.
So, I, 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 I,
Okay, I'm saying, in the manner in which this bill will be implemented, it will be like any other SOE.
So, I, 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 I,
Uh, just recently, it has been reported that twenty two billion has gone missing due to corruption in the healthcare system.
I, 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 I,
Uh, now, if you look at the, the problems that will arise if you centralize everything in the government's hands.
Do I, 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 I,
This government has no accountability.
I'm, 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 I, 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 I,
So that means there will never be accountability still even if this, uh, NHI, NHI bill can be implemented.
Oh, but, I, 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 I,
So the government needs to clean its house.
Kaho, I'm, 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 I'm,
It must regain our trust as the citizens.
I'm, 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 I'm,
We did not lose the, the trust, uh, from the government voluntarily, but the government has forced us to.
I, 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 I,
We have seen what the, the government runs where it goes.
I, 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 I,
So basically, this NHI will not achieve what it seeks to achieve.
Kabo, who's, I, 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 I,
Thank you very much.
Can I, 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 I,
My name is Hatevi.
Can you, I'm, 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 I'm,
Resident of Zamdela.
I'm, 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 I'm,
I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm, I'm,
Yes. It's about, I'm, 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 I'm,
What we are here about?
It's about, it's, 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 it's,
It's a very important matter.
Oh, but, it's, 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 it's,
Because it deals with health.
It's, 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 Aspect, it's, 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 it cannot be recycled.
It deals with an aspect that comes once, it cannot be recycled.
But, I, 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 I,
My view on the proposed vision of the NHI.
Can I, 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 I,
I believe that it will work.
I, 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 I,
If it can fall into the hands of responsible people.
Yeah, well, I, 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 And mission within the government.
Falling in the hands of the, the people who share the same vision with the government.
I, 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 I.
It can succeed.
Good, this is, I, 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 I.
My understanding says.
My, I'm, 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 And the private, I, 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 I.
The situation in the public service and then the private service will be the same.
Yeah, I, 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 I,
I would really appreciate if everything can go that way.
It's too good to believe.
I, 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 I,
I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, NHI, I, 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 Detonate from the lower level of the, of, of, of the health service, who are the hospital. If this, this service is, this, it's, 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 my fear is that, but to bear those who are supposed to be saved by it.
I, 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 I,
But, I, 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 Or, I, 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 The NHI itself.
I, 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 I.
NHI, it was, it's, 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 it's,
NHI will use the funds to improve.
It's, I, 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 I,
They will charge their clients in order to recover their expenses.
This institution, NHI, must, it must guarantee us today.
It's, 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 it's,
That it won't hit back on the pockets of the poor people of this country.
I, 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 I,
To sustain the vision of this institution, NHI.
I, 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 I.
I want to ask the NHI personnel representative today.
But, I, 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 I,
As to whether they have done their research.
I, 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 I,
Have they done their homework?
I, 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 I,
To see as to whether there are finances available.
I, 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 I,
Are there assets available?
I, 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 I,
Are there doctors, qualified doctors within the country who are qualified to do the job?
I, 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 I,
We don't wish so much to have them from outside, but we want our children to be, to do justice to this country.
I, 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 I,
If NHI can do those basic things.
I, 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 I'm, 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 I'm,
This institution and the mission and the vision of it will be, will be just marvelous, it's going to succeed.
I, 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 I,
Have you taken care of the external systems of the world today? The roughness outside, the behavior of the people outside? I'm talking about the security of the new things that you are going to implement, the expensive assets, internal corruption of most of the.
I, 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 I,
Our system is placed to keep those corruption activities.
I, 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 I,
I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, I, Role of the NHI, what is the role of the NHI to develop and help those kids who are doing medicine, who have followed the medicine as a career path?
I, 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 I,
Who are doing it now and who will be doing them next time?
I, 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 I,[1517.84]
I hope NHI will play a bigger role in that particular sphere. NHI.
NHI.
Must also play a bigger role in the curriculum formation of the schools. Content thereof. And I hope. And wish. If we can have godly colleagues and workers. South Africa can be a good country. Take care of your kids.
I greet all the gathering that is here today. My name is Mohati Mutle. I've got three points for which I need answers. The first one is about the medical aid. I would like to know that us, because us as the workers, public workers, as we are paying the medical aid. Are we going to continue to contribute in the fund? Because honestly. Medical aids and medical clinics are stealing from us. I already know that my over the counter allocation will be finished in March. If this insurance can be available. It will be to the benefit of the public workers and the citizens of South Africa. Second one. Is there any staff available for the implementation of this NHI? Because the challenge for the government is that. Most clinics are packed up with patients who cannot be assisted. Our request is that when the implementation of this NHI starts. There should be enough workers. The third and the last one. The third one is. When this bill passes. As parliament thought of the timeframes of commencing with the implementation of NHI. Because some of us. We don't want to go to the clinics maybe in June, thinking that the implementation has already started. May it be passed in 2023. Thank you. I greet the residents of Fesile Darby. My name is Mulebuhemma Elete. I come from Mokwalofredefort. I'm the deputy secretary of the National Congress. African National Congress. I'm standing here to support or to make a plea to the parliament. To implement this policy of NHI. Because it is going to benefit the poor. Especially because it's going to benefit the poorest of the poor. Because they can't access the essential services because of their financial status. Therefore, I also support the fact that the president has said it will be implemented by vetoing phases. My other request about the committees that will be implemented by the NHI bill. Those committees responsible for implementing this policy. This bill aims to achieve. It should be responsible people who will not taint the image of the objective of this bill. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I would like to greet everyone who's here today. My name is Grace Nkwalo, I'm from Freyrefort. I would like to firstly state that I support NHI and I'm grateful for the opportunity that we're given. But I have a few questions that I would like to ask. Before you came here, were you aware that we have a challenge of electricity, that we do not have electricity? Did you also realize that we lack water in this place? What is the NHI saying to address these challenges? My other question is related to the fact that you mentioned that you will also include asylum seekers in this insurance. If I, my readings are correct, we have about eleven point three people who are not from here. Don't you realize that by providing these people with health services that we need as South Africans, you are bettering our system? For instance, if we are queuing, there's twenty people queuing in a queue and you also decide to provide illegal immigrants with health services, do you wonder how this is going to affect us as South Africans? Do we have a say in this? My last point is, as NHI committee. What are you promising us? Is there a guarantee that indeed this will be implemented so that so as to avoid a situation where we'll end up pointing fingers at one another? Thank you.
This mic comes here, but we'll start with this line. When I was making announcement on this matter. And send it to the table there. Because we are not going to be able to assist you now. And send it to the table, okay? Right now, we start here. Please, if you do leave, leave quietly and not disturb the processes then. Challenges related to water and electricity.
Good afternoon, everyone, I would like to start off by greeting everyone who's present here today. My name is Intlan Clan Kava, I am from Vilas and I would like to go straight to the point. I would like to also state that we support NHI because parliament has brought this draft to us to have a say in it. And I would also like to clear any confusions which may be caused by those who would like to divide our nation regarding NHI. May I also explain that each and every governmental department gets audited as to how finances are spent? And we have what we call clean audits. So we cannot just assume that NHI is not going to be successful because it has not been implemented yet. So it cannot be audited.
Those two seated behind the camera, I can hear you while I'm here. While I'm here, I can listen, hear what you are talking about there. Now, there's too loud.
May I also state that NHI is not one of the SOEs, so it will not be treated like an SOE. The National Development Plan also states that there is a way to manage any expensive costs which may arise while we try to implement the bill. NHI also addresses the fact that we are supposed to provide high quality public health to our people. We cannot allow that people do not receive quality health, the health with the standard that they deserve. NHI addresses such issues. You will also realize that medical aid fees have increased five times when you compare them to the services that people receive in public institutions. It shows that our people cannot afford these services as they are much more expensive and we need to provide them with high quality public health services. May I also emphasize this point that most of our professional healthcare workers, doctors, work in the private sector, leaving our people in the public sector with many needs which need to be addressed and therefore they cannot be serviced. So my point is, this has to change as well. Our government pays for health facilities so as to ensure that our people are assisted and even are assisted by being provided health services, even using tax subsidies to do so. We also are aware of the fact that currently these tax subsidies go to people who already have the financial means to get private healthcare. And our people who are the ones that are supposed to be benefiting from benefiting from these tax subsidies are not benefiting. So therefore, we must also change that issue.
NHI, it will reduce cost of private healthcare. NHI will reduce cost of private healthcare.
Our health facilities will also receive the same standards, financial standards and support so as to ensure, as the chairperson has already stated, so as to ensure that there is a balance between private healthcare and public healthcare. NHI will also address other issues like the standard of services that we receive from our public facilities. It will provide us with high quality services. It will also ensure that our facilities or institutions are clean. It will ensure that people no longer stand long queues to receive public services. It will ensure that our facilities are up to standard and we receive the high quality health services that we deserve. We also mentioned the issue of corruption and there are three factors which I believe, regarding corruption, which I believe NHI will address. And they are the following. The first one is what we call end door pockets payment, where our patients are expected to pay to get services. So they pay this behind closed doors or in public and private facilities. They pay this while they are queuing or outside the door of the facilities. The second one is the additional fees one, or what we refer to as gap fees, that you as a patient are expected to pay if there's a shortfall from your medical expense. So NHI will also end this aspect of corruption whereby if it happens that your child is sick and the medical aid does not cover the whole amount, you will no longer be expected to pay that additional fee.
That also will not have an opportunity.
The last point is what we refer to as cash payments. This means that if you no longer have medical aid funds or funds on your medical aids, you are expected to make cash payments. NHI will also ensure that this also ends. This is the other corruption aspect which will end.
NHI will provide finance direct. It will provide direct finance for healthcare.
The speaker has already interpreted himself. NHI will also ensure that if you stay in Freyrefort or Paris or Sosolbek, you'll be able to choose an NHI facility center which will provide you with the health services. NHI will also ensure that our clinics and other health facilities are renovated from time to time. NHI will also know, will also ensure that our clinics and other health facilities are renovated from time to time.
Ya otetel, ya otetela.
The last one, the very last one.
Ya otetel, hu NHI, haona hori di benefits, ea fe la mon. Haona rotosheera di cost za treatment, demon. Ok, and then, unless weyena ulimukuti, osamamili doctor, di tire, oza timoro, inwa di pelisi haka, and so on. Kapasankidi, di, kliniki moli di tire. So haona di benefits eto za fe la mona, haona rotosheera di cost demon. So, we stand here firm, as South African citizen, we support NHI.
The, the last point is that with NHI, we will no longer have a situation whereby you run out of funds or you have to share costs. Jwale kama Africa boroa, reema mona, ritsheza NHI kabutal, kialebo.
My request still stands. Focus on just areas and see if you go broad. Some of the issues that our speakers are repeating, I already said that NHI, as I was reading them. So, don't summarize again the NHI unless you ask clarity, comment on it. But there were certain areas that is like now going through the NHI again eh, in a way that is very elaborate. Just summarize your input, please.
Ba tu ves, jwale kaseki, tshalusiteki akoba zwaye zwaye, ki zeholo na, hale tlamona, ke ko balitlo nyehelana, kadi tswayelo, di pozo kapodi nklaza tlatzezo, ke ko baliska ya mona, otro tshalusawo re na, NHI ki in. Ha ki kala mossebelezi mona, ki leka tshalusaka, za kaka rezo ya hori na, haribuaka NHI, ribuaka in. Ki lebelezo remoto, adwe ma mona, adlo nyehelana, kadi peso za hai, eseng adlo retshaluse, za habe apete, se senseki sivuile, ga ko opo ba tu ves.
My name is Richard Mukodedi, I am also from Butsavelo in the Free State.
Libizolaga, ki Richard Mukodedi, ki eto wa Butsavelo Free State.
We didn't have an opportunity to make our presentation when the portfolio committee was in Mangawum on Monday.
Haraka ra fumana, monye tla hori rephehise, ha portfolio committee ine elema ne ne, sedirikinsa Mangawum kama nta.
Then I took it upon myself to come and put an input here.
Me ki kawiki leka itla, kaipileso, ki tle, ki tli se, kajanule na le, na ki tlo nyehelana, ka peso yak.
Chairperson, as a democratic government was ushered in nineteen ninety-four.
Mudulasstulo ham, muso wa democrasi, uno kenya buso, kaslimo sa nineteen ninety-four.
Our, I mean, the dynapathic health system was, I mean, the democratic government injured the dynapathic health system.
Muso onawa democrasi, uile warua, di kolo tose ne se di enzwe, ki, ki, muso wa chetholo, haudra di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle.
Now, this particular bill that has been brought before us today.
Bilyana na etli sitwenka, pe la runa, kajanule na.
We welcome it and recommend for it to be legislated as an act.
Ri ay, ananela, ibile ri ay, amuhela, ibile buela, rehutalezo hori, ife tuleho, basakamla, iye zemulau.
Reasons are as follows.
Mabaka, kiana alatelan.
One, this will assist in addressing the inequality in the health system through provision of equal health services.
Ntlapi etla netifaza hori, hausana, chokiyata katika, no haudra di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle.
It will further benefit the poor and improve the quality of healthcare at all our facilities.
Etla buela, entla fazza, ma pila ba futana, lo entla fazza, di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle, di tse, ntarunatza, za bu pilo gobo hutle.
It will ensure an affordable and accessible health system to all South Africans.
Etla netifaza hori, ma Africa boroa, ose, afumanzwa, di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle, zelingore, ba chona, hudi, hudi filela, ya ga buchoni, baba na ba di chelete.
The Freedom Charter in nineteen fifty-five, that was adopted in Clifton.
Freedom Charter, haini ekinyasewezo, ka nineteen, nineteen fifty-five, kept motseka ba, ile ya ekinyasewezo, otshalusazena.
When the Freedom Charter was adopted in nineteen fifty-five in Clifton.
Haini ekinyaa, ne e, ananela, ibile kenya sebelezo, mani motseka ba ka nineteen fifty-five.
It never was put into practice, it was adopted.
Ha eyaka ya sebelezo, ile ya ananela fe la.
To ascertain that it becomes a policy to guide the government.
Huneti fazza hori, ebale ya no la sebelezo, letla tata isa muso.
And this was also co-ordered.
Me sena leso nasile sa kenye lezo.
And I quote.
Me kia, kia ipota.
A preventative health scheme shall be run by the state.
Muso otla etameisa, sekemesa wa di tsebelezo, ba, di sekemesa di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle.
A preventative health scheme.
Muso otla, muso otla kenya di tsebele, sekemesa di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle, se tve la.
Shall be run by the state, yes. Free medical care.
Onyehelana, kadi tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle, za mahala.
And free hospitalization.
Ho, ho, amuhela ba kuti di bedi, le mahala.
Shall be provided for all.
Me ba tla nyehela bos.
Thank you very much.
Ko opo ka pit.
All right. Free medical care and hospitalization shall be provided for all.
Osalefele, hadi tsebelezo di bedi leende, chokomela za bu pilo gobo hutle, tla fisello, ki bose.
With special care for mothers and young children.
Ka chokomela ya bommele basia.
Slums shall be demolished.
Me, me tseba ipei, haino ba tinke.
And new suburbs built where all have transport.
Matloa, matle, atla hawa, mi beten, di palangwang, za bose.
Roads.
Me bila.
Lighting.
Ma boni.
Plane fields.
Ma, ma, ma bala, adi papadi.
Crashers.
Di crashi.
And social centers.
Lead iti za se chav, za di tsebelezo za se chav.
The aged. The aged.
Ba, ba, ma keku.
The orphans.
Di hutzana.
The disabled and the sick.
Basa iti kanelan le ba kula.
Shall be cared for by the state.
Ba tla chokomela ki muso.
In the past.
Nakoni e fidile mudulasstulo.
Under the apathic health system.
Tlasa tama isha, za bu pilo gobo hutle, apathiti.
Healthcare was unequal.
Za bu, pepelezo, za bu pilo gobo hutle, di ne di salikani.
It was segregated.
Honoli tiendika rohano.
In terms of our color of skin.
Huya ka mala, walitla lo la hau.
In terms of our language.
Huya ka ma le meri sebelezi san.
And our economic standing.
Le ma ema amurua runa.
We can therefore not forget.
Kahoe hera, keke ralebala.
Where we come from.
More tzwanti.
And pretend as if today.
Ibe re etajolka eka kajeno.
That the government that has been in power only for less than twenty years.
Muso ngobi le, ma tlen di limontse, katlaso te twenty.
Can be able to rectify all the wrongs and the ills of apathic system.
Ibe okachona, hon tla fazza, di mbitzo se ta muso wa apathiti.
And therefore.
Me ka hohe.
Today as we sit here.
Kajeno, jwale ka reditze mona.
We need to be able to be proud South African, patriotic with our own selves.
Aluke la Obama, Africa boroa, aratana, hayarona, amututuka se, relenson.
And support all the initiatives that are going to build our people to equality.
Te etze di tacholozo, shletze tla te etza se chavasaro.
And build the dignity.
Lo a haseriti.
Of all our people.
Sa ba tu bose ba runa.
In particular African people.
Ka ukolea, ba ba tu.
We have been historically disadvantaged even today.
Issa alereko detu, huya kanalane, u fili la kajeno.
And pretend to be good.
Ibe weto eka, kese luketi.
In those particular contexts, chair.
Kam, smantze a, ohe mudulasstulo.
I wish to stand here.
Ke lakata ohe ma mona.
And officially state categorically here that we support the implementation of the initiative.
Ibe kebea si muso, ka otshaki le, ona retse etza NHI.
Thank you very much.
Kialebo ahor. Spasakaposutunde.
Yes.
Kialebo, oska yalu, lolo, lolo, tvo tolo ka hank.
Eh, ki dumedi se, committee, eto bu pilo, parliamente.
Greetings to the Health Committee from Parliament.
Libizolaga, ki sipiwemukwena.
My name is Si Piwemukwena.
Ki mudulasstulo wa civil society.
I am the chairperson of the Civil Society.
Ba tu, kahara Free State.
In Free State.
Ba tu, basa chonungu ipuella, ba tlasitlasi.
People who can't speak for themselves.
For now, today, kitwa babuella, kapari, vungo ho babuella.
Kajeno, for now, I'm here to talk on their behalf.
Ba tu ba oba, sebelezi san, di petele za muso, lead kliniki za muso.
The people who are using the public health facilities, including clinics and hospitals.
Re re, uima, butuwa, ki runa.
We are saying, we are feeling the pain.
Ochesa hasi eda, ho huruna.
It's us who feel the pinch of those services.
Olai eto mu kutwanyani, kajeno, portfolio committee.
The short message to the portfolio committee is.
Re re riakoba, riakoba, haudwelehu politizezo, agama pila arun.
We plead with you not to politicize, to make, to play politics with our health issues.
Kahona.
Therefore.
Ri yudwele da ba, hu mudulasstulo.
We have heard the summary from the chairperson.
And it is clear that NHI is going to strengthen the health, the health facilities.
Me otshaki le hori, NHI, itzo, utlo ma tla fazza, di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle.
Otinza, di thotse be kamchonu.
It is going to transform things.
We as civil society, ba basa chonungu ipuella.
We people who can't speak for themselves.
Re, ya, support the NHI.
We support the NHI.
Obali ronarere ba tu, obana di ritiza runa di sumpuwa.
Because we want to see our dignity being uplifted or protected.
Ronarere ba tu, fumana, di, di doctor, di special.
We also want to have access to specialist doctors.
So, in short.
Ka bu kutwan.
We therefore demand that.
Ra zeka hori.
To the portfolio committee.
Portfolio committee.
To fast track.
Epo tla kise.
Implementation.
O kenya sebelezo.
Of the NHI.
Ha NHI.
And we support.
Meria tehe.
NHI hundred and ten percent.
Kadi peresent ete, hundred and ten, re etze he etza kialebo. I, I pass my greetings to the committee.
Ne ba, ai bose ba tinka kwan.
And the citizens available here.
Ki re, ki ananela, no ho, na hu amuhela, eh, le anulenala NHI.
I accept and support the NHI.
Oh, so libizolaga, ki na manini maduna.
My name is Manini Maduna.
Itzo Kalabo Chavillas.
I come from Kalabo Chavillas.
Eh, le anulenana, lepona halalitlisa, eh, kama no ha hulu, pa kenza ba tu ba, basna, basna unhona, le ba tu ba, uile.
This policy will bring a good relationship or good services for the rich and the poor.
Obaino bona halahori, hangata ikari, di, di, ni kita hunani, ba tu bayahutzo, anakiba tu basa chonimpe.
Because apparently it's like people who go to the public clinics is people who cannot afford.
Me ka hona kiali amuhela, ba tachona, lepona hu kenya mu ba ba tanti.
And therefore, we support the fact that with the implementation of NHI, people can access health services anywhere.
Impa ha olijolo he, hanze ri, tzezapelele, anulenala runa, keshabeze la tela.
As we plan to implement this NHI, we must look at the following.
Ya, ho so ke ha, hama nese, ise uwe.
The scarcity of the nurses has been said already.
Elemparela yu hunu, especially mona ki tzwanti, Kalabo Chavillas.
Which is a big challenge from where I'm coming from in Villas.
Le supporting staff, di kliniki za runa, hadi ma emoga madhi.
Our clinics are not in good standing because there's no support staff.
Kalaba kalahori, di tsebelezo se ngata, di centralize to the district.
Because most services are centralized at the district hospitals.
For in case, motu atla milo mentena, di toilette.
For instance, somebody who should maintain the toilets.
He must come from Sosolbeck to Villas.
Aluke la, owa Sosolbeck, ki ayavillas.
And then, hapeli mu kwa oh, di, he, osebelezi sa, hu vita di ambulancesa, runa ka haru Free State.
Even the manner of using our ambulances in Free State.
Ha, otamilo hu fumana, hu fone la ambulance, opota, hu olé.
When you want to call the ambulance, you must via from somewhere.
Ri pileta hu committee, ele ente kajeno hori, ba leke hutle se, di tsebelezo hau finyala.
Therefore, we plead with the committee to bring the services close by.
Obaini magesine, amanya, ato na bo Villas, koronele duelen kopis, keso kola ha hulu.
Because in the smaller townships that she has mentioned, there's, the people suffer, so.
U fili la re, lusa ma pila ba tu, ba ngata, kalaba galanto, ekalu kisoa.
Many lose their lives whereas these problems or challenges can be fixed.
Kialebo.
Thank you. Atantak, sutuka pasros.
Eh, kalamere, kalamere.
Sutuka pasros.
Ah, kosa si.
Oh, sutuli English.
Good afternoon, eh, ladies and gentlemen.
Kialedu medisa bommele, won tade.
We want to appreciate this opportunity given this afternoon.
Eh, ba tla hollebohela, monye tla, ho fuenka, tapaminge na.
And also make our inputs.
Le hueza di tswayelo za runa.
For the last twenty-five years, as we have been voting.
Di limontse, twenty-five, se fiti nenzene, revota katona.
This is part of the vote that we have been doing. We voted to get this type of health services.
Revoted, fumana, di tsebelezo za bu pilo gobo hutle, te kantena.
We voted for the ruling party to, to rush in ensuring that our health systems improves.
Revoted, mo hatlo, bu sang, uneti fazza, horo, hu kenya za bu pilo gobo hutle, katwanee.
So, NHI is urgent for us.
Kahoe, NHI, e, po tla kintya bu shoko.
We regard NHI as a transformation tool.
Renka, NHI, ili zelaya petulelo hab.
A tool that will.
Renka, NHI, ili sebelezi swasa petule.
A tool that will unravel all the inequalities.
Sebelezi swase, tla fedisa, hoselikanihoti.
We are desperate, we are eagerly waiting for it.
Remaemon, atwa ni eto, re, yemezi, kachangel.
Ha iyo taba, eh, there's nothing like, NHI is unsustainable.
Ha iyo ntwering, NHI keke a tlaya.
How does it become unsustainable when we continue to pay our general taxes every day?
Etla putlamajwani, impa tza la pinhule falache.
How is it going to collapse when we are also subsidizing even those who are rich, the wealthy since South Africa?
Etla putlamajwani, impa tsetza, kadi chele tele, ba ruhi, hadi ba Africa boroa.
Salahiyo taba, eh, yar duelen otezo.
Therefore, there's no such, people must not lie to us.
Ma emo adi kliniki sa runa, Africa boroa.
When we look at the conditions of our clinics in South Africa.
Ma tata atinka, ofeleksa, tu buanka, ona mona honajwa.
The challenges that are available, that I'm not going to talk about right now.
Will also be dealt with through the NHI.
Di tla bes, atla besenza kenye lezo, NHI.
Good today, the presentation, tenzedieso, mona bar, kamachi babang, ha, machi fita, ba tatalama ipatala, wa medical aid, ta waso lo exhausted.
I've heard some concerns from other speakers saying that sometimes around March, their funds are depleted.
We believe the NHI, that will not be the case.
Redume la, ha NHI, kenze tsebelezo, se uskeke sa etza hal.
We believe those core payments that we are doing now will not be an issue.
Redume la, di core payments, etze, etze, juan, di geketza shola, di ba tinke.
NHI will be able to be closer to our people's needs.
Me, NHI, etla etza, hori, di kogozaba, tu, di atamela, di fumana.
Ba tu ba runa, ba futane ile.
Our poor people.
Tshaluzaman, kaza opi.
Our poor people will access very important health services.
Isa underminding the private hospitals.
Not undermining the available or already existing health services.
More resources must be dedicated.
More resources must be dedicated to the national infer- national health insurance.
Impa di sebe disoza bu shoka zengada di lukela oteheza NHI.
Ha hona kama ohu, na di beneficial NHI ratawa, mosane ote, ifanside.
There's no way with the beneficiaries of NHI will wake up one day he- hearing that the funds have been depleted.
Tisa watlu eza pitopito, ro na itzeza national health insurance.
Without repeating myself, we support the NHI.
Kialébo.
Thank you.
Akidumédisé kaharon.
I would like to greet everybody in the house.
Kitwale ha holo committee etli de onashtawa kialébo.
In particular, the committee that is visiting us.
Eh, ke watlu eza pitapito hakalo.
I don't want to repeat myself again.
Hoba nizadi nza di nta zeni kamilo bua katona.
Because some of the points I was going to talk about.
Ki zepaun tate kupé kanda tate hateven, tate baba, tate mukote.
All the previous speakers have already mentioned.
Basseba wileka zo. Enegra tahu, hushtava sekapuan.
I would like to say this to the people gathered here.
Dabaya, NHI is kafella kapuan.
The issue of or discussions of the NHI must not end here.
Ki zepa wrenarala, le manese renalist darf setinkaha ro hona, sebezan kabatu, abaye basalu sezeba tu, bu shoka ba NHI.
I believe that there are nurses and health workers who are in here, please go and explain to the people the importance of the NHI.
Kama nzoa kira tao shalu saori, ki sapodor NHI i implementuwe kialébo.
In those words, I support the fact that NHI should be supported.
Dumela.
Greetings to everyone.
Eh, my name is Bongani Makregeni.
Libitola ka ki Bongani Makregeni.
I'm from here in Zamdela Sasolbe, Metimahol.
Kitwahona mona Zamdela Sasolbe ki Metimahol.
I am very thankful to you, Jokja and your team, that you have made your way to this place so that we can air and talk freely to you about this NHI.
Kialébo ahoo ena modulas tulu nga kahore ebé utlili mona le muifoaha ore famunyetla wa ore retshaya le mire bolele ma, ribua ma ikutuaro.
As much as I am happy, what I am requesting to know from here.
Laha kitabili se uki lakazang, hussezeba otoa mona.
Is for you and your team to come up with practical solutions.
Koru ena le muifoaha olitlele di tarolo zeka etzehang.
Because in our health insurance, in our health as hospitals.
Hoba ni di pitlili ntsa ro na.
We experience long queues.
Rabona me lae melelele.
And all the unnecessary people dying in long queues without attendance and lack of doctors.
Lu ba tu barona basho ba le mele, yo emitelele hosoka aladinata.
It is by that reason that most people, they opt for expensive medical, I mean, uh, medical aids.
Ke ma bagana susumele zamba tuore, ebé banka di medical aid itze duran.
Because they want to get what is outlined in the Batupili principles as the best value for money.
Hoba ni ba batka fumana se uthungo ba tu pele, ki sebelezo ente oele fela.
Now I want to ease my, I wanted to ease my pressure now I'm in, whether this NHI will have a practical solution for people on chronic medication deliveries.
Ebe na ba tu vata fumana tarolo ya ro ba fumanemi rianna ya bonaya chronic, ki kau re iswe mobile ngonade.
Again, I am requesting you not to wait until the water runs dry.
Hape ki kupaleske la emela, pula ema rotori ama holo.
Now that you are here doing this, uh, roadshow of NHI.
Joalo kahale le mona li etza noyoma ikutoka NHI ena.
Currently, we are experiencing load shedding. I believe it is as a result of the low supply of energy.
Hoba hona joale, rabona load shedding eki dumela onre kiba kalatlo keo ya pepe loya matla.
Then a load shedding in the health system, it will result in death.
Me load shedding inha etza ala, oto plo bo butle itla etza, hobetintaselo ya mapil.
For instance, we are having the GMS, which is a government, a medical aid scheme.
Hona joale renali GMS ilen medical aid scheme ya muso.
Where you will be told when you are requesting that is, requesting any form of assistance, they will tell you that there are different kinds of option, options you can choose from.
Ha ba tu fomo ba oblenla, hona di options efa fafa paninzuka di hetang.
To choo, to, to suit your health problem or your financial background or your.
Otsama elanale maya moha wa bo pilo kapo, maya moha wa di chelle.
As we support this bill of, of, of NHI.
Joalo kara tseta billiona NHI.
I want to put up front.
Ke batla oshaki sa kaku trolu.
That I will join, I will be among the person as I'm supporting it.
Joalo ka ki itzeza kira kitlabeki le emongu abaa unyamole.
I will be the one person who will be marching against you if you don't deliver and support like you are saying.
Kitlabeki le emongu abaa wanamba ipila etza haye balisa.
What I'm requesting is your continuous engagement, like this roadshow that you are doing.
Se uki sikupanku re libessa lili tizana le ro na joalo ka di ponzo zena zeli di yenzeng mona ka jenu.
So that we don't experience that saying that there is a need, that there is a need for being out for this NHI.
Haske ra uka so tu kutwa di tusezo zadi chelle teteza NHI.
However, even if it's there, let it be told and let it be said in advance.
Laheba huka ba tensi he useu re kupao bolelo akabu tata esaleka na.
In time.
Esaleka na.
So that we po- we pop up something so that we support this bill.
Elu re retzebe honza honka tsete billiona.
In those words.
Kama nzea.
I support NHI and I would very appreciate, even if it could be implemented the very same tomorrow.
Min katabela laika ba ika kenya sebezo mosan.
I can NHI, I can.
Let's implement NHI, let's implement it.
Thanks, Che. Ikamalamu Jablan Kamakubu.
Kialébo hamdulas tulu, my name is Jablan Kamakubu.
Chairperson, I'm not going to take more time.
Modulas tulu, hakitlo onkana kuetelele mona.
Rather than to voice our support for NHI.
Ki ema mona fela hutla hatela la tsete zoyaro na ka NHI.
For the following reasons.
Ka bakalama bakala tela.
Section twenty-five of the. Now, second chair.
Ntlabope dimdulas tulu.
Is the right to life.
Ki tu kelo ya bo pilo.
We have no right.
Arana tu kelo.
To be treated unequal insofar as health is concerned.
Orarasi kera, tsaaga tzi la esaleka ning how to etabopélo bo butle.
We have no right.
Ha ona tu ge- tsaanelo.
To choose to be treated less insofar as health is.
Horarinyé di seka porashabelo fatzo zapa pepe lo zabopélo bo butle.
The right to choose, Chairperson.
Tu kelo ya oretam dulas tulu.
Is not absolute.
Ha eka hosle hosle.
It is a right insofar as it doesn't infringe on other people's rights.
Ki tu kelo etwa nele ilen ha fela esatzo poli di tu kelo zaba.
We have a right to life.
Kanale tu kelo ya bo pilo.
We cannot compromise that right, that life.
Re kebe ra compromise zat, tu kelo eo.
So Chairperson.
Kaho hemdulas tulu.
We are saying.
Re re.
South Africa.
Afrika Bora.
In terms of part one of the constitution.
Hoya ka kaholo ané apilia mulao teo.
One sovereign country.
Kenaha, ele eki mazing.
Provinces are a support structure to national government.
Eh, lukela oteheza.
The threat of constitutional court is not going to see the night.
Impa tusezo, o, zamaiso nyamula oteo ikekeya atlea.
We are saying, Chair.
Re re hemdulas tulu.
The provinces.
Di provinsi.
Support national government.
Di tseta muso baharing.
Implement national legislation.
Kenya sebezo mulawana.
As they implement the national legislation.
How kenya sebezo mulawana.
Their powers are going to be defined insofar as that particular piece of legislation is concerned.
Ma tza amula ohu atla shaki swa, hoya ka.
There is no powers taken away from the provinces.
Ha ona madanguandhi provinsi.
We, let me lastly, Chair, say.
Eré ki re lau kétela modulas tulu.
We cannot sustain the inequalities in health.
Re kebe ra tuela, uzele pilo, selikani hoting.
We must do away with that.
Hala kela ferisa seu.
And introduce NHI.
Meri kenya sebezo NHI.
Like yesterday.
Kapotla.
Thanks very much.
Kialébo ahoo.
Akilébo, mudulas tulu, le ba mpo tapotileng, kilébo, libotla batileng kopa nohena.
Eré, let me start off by thanking the Chairperson and his fellow colleagues and everyone who's present here today.
Nakali bizeo ki Joseph Mukubwani kizo ahoo, hola Mahfoube na mahdi Frankfurt.
My name is Joseph Mukubwani, I'm from Mahfoube, Frankfurt.
Ke uka, uh, Chairperson zebua kapatuwa, porlogandi thoko, ba tuwa, ba ba holo le ba, sasebezi. Ki kupaluruna ba tuwa na nukala, rekenele izwe, na nonle na, na, eh, NHI, ore, civil disaruna, ebé zamantala, skara, gudanzera salizom rauka na kutu.
I had that the Chairperson mentioned that the, uh, the services will be provided for the elderly, uh, unemployed people. I would like to also request that we as people living with disabilities, we should also be included in this insurance, we should also receive high quality savers.
Eh, matata mangapa kopa na luana, keli sebezo zeku sebeza, kula ka uchaya yeneki sebeza, kinkana kotelele hori di fitooru. Ukoba na oru na, uchu arenke five years ru, eto thora ewuha. If five years, if iteleu, hara uchaya ro beileme, ha ona senka se zangu, ki ba matata oru wa li, se joki ba de pati zaya, ona oru iluksi koro sebezo wa li, kona ma ntuaka, ukwa sebeza kara zibul.
The other main challenge that we have, um, particularly with regards to myself as an individual who's using a wheelchair to move around, is that it takes a long time for us to receive new wheelchairs. For instance, it took me about five years to receive a wheelchair that I applied for. So this is a big problem for us because we are denied the services that we deserve, so this is one challenge that I, I feel should be addressed.
Tisa pa la, de, de, de kulele keta zaro, di sebelezo zaru na, ebé zamantala me, skato hapesa ruso kola, la pe la kaba tuwa nukala. Haria di klinik nalma tata oru, eto thora ya, haru pani, ntwené bijoma tupele, ibata isanzele bu thata, usoka ikena aholu ba tuwa, kara komunita, tsa pa ru, kula li kené, lezebu ni tu pa ru, nirunarufunan zat, sebezo zamantala.
I would, I would, I encourage that, um, that this insurance will ensure that we receive high quality services. Because as people who are living with disabilities, we still experience a lot of discrimination when we visit healthcare centers or facilities, where we are not treated equally compared to other patients who are not living with disabilities.
Ntlaka uka tira, ngataba holo kule na, hala kaya zaro, ni tuwa di klingi zo si, ni mahai, di sebeze, idwaraze masummane, amzemiini, hori, nimuruoru, u, zibo pahamo, ba tuwa basasitzi, bofmona msiwa, bo, ba zibo fmona msiwizi, dikarlu, dikarunzi ripila ngozo.
My last point is that I would like to recommend that all clinics, regardless of where they are situated, be it in the urban areas or rural areas, they should operate twenty-four seven. This will help to not just provide, uh, services all the time, but to, uh, help with the issue of lack of job opportunities for our people.
Akilébo mudulas tulu.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Uh, can you, can you go close to the HOD here, uh, so that he can give you a real-time program when you can get your wheelchair, when you need a new one.
Ki kupao ye hu HOD mani, atla atzebe hu shaluseza, hori na ugro fumana, eh, wheelchair hau enchanenin, alha aufe na ko, ea twa nezing, oraufe wheelchair yenu kayo.
Dumela, mbandadu la stulu, na duméri amsendo. Ti ku obta katoa uta na, hoba nuu kunaxa troyi di dian sa kere ma kubutena, ene ki re habretla, ki re patient, haka troyi vitlan sa ka amelia, hutla tu ba tu ka amelia kawa. Komu itra, ka toutu na wani.
Good afternoon, Chairperson and your, your colleagues there. My name is Miriam Sindo. Sindo. I would like to ask why as the elderly are we not receiving sites? We need sites, we need, uh, the land where we can, where we can be able to have our own places. Because I'm not, I'm not just an elderly person, but I'm also a patient as well, we as health challenges.
Habretla ke, kinalsi kia tritisik, kinalsi kia ekelenzi.
I, I'm, I'm suffering from arthritis, I also have mental challenges.
And I can amokidula.
And I don't have a place to stay.
Pretu.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, mek.
Hon, hon.
Oza ngapa ma, echoti.
Honu ki kupao fitele hu HOD mola.
That, this gentleman is going to help you there.
Nda de, nukala tu samon.
There, this one.
Ena duzinkamolenka pe.
That is, that is site ya ha.
Ka tava ya hau ya stent.
Uh, ketsalu dumédisa va etapili, ba eloro ba tu parlamenting, kala wizoke Abraham Moshala.
I would like to start off by greeting all the leadership from Parliament. My name is Abraham Moshala.
Ntweki shompana holo holo na, kinsule, eh, chairman alekuili onore, ba zamaili di kuto, zale fase, ba bua kayo na, dogomane ba zamayan kayo.
What I appreciate mostly is the fact that the Chairperson stated that you traveled around learning about this specific document that you are presenting to us today.
Kana kuanwe haulo moto osana hani, hau shevili wa tuwa kisha ntwenze huen na, ele hora hau hau, uya hante, ukasi kuatso ru mezi, ntotoi bua fela, gore ikasukona hali.
Sometimes when you are privileged enough, when you have food at your table, when people present something that's going to make a difference, you tend to not appreciate it because you don't need it.
Honali ntwe ele ongoro ka ishaeva hono joale, heba buaka spetele se ele ongoro ki sa muso, bariki spetele sa malema, bat sa ba huwa fela, oriki spetele sa ba tuwa chena.
For instance, when they refer to public hospitals, they talk as if public hospitals cater for everyone, but truth of the matter is, public hospitals are meant for specific people.
Joalo ntwe linte ngi, pre ya isapoda, ai eh, pre ya isapoda, ba ilongo re banali di chelle te, banali medicali, ba ta ya moba yantengi, pre ya isapoda, hoba na banaba.
Pre ya supporta ho banu ba na bo re na. Ha mu isha speteli samalemani. Mu isha mo iloruka osanwa ta obulela hori. Ta omunki se akoka hezi. Kialibo.
I stand here to say we support it, we support it, we want it. Those who have the financial means can continue to go use private, private healthcare. But the situation right now is that if you take your, one of your relatives to a public hospital, they don't make it and you are informed that they've passed away, we support the bill.
Kialibo medisa ka au feela. Eh libitola ka ki Pei Mutloka.
I greet you all. My name is Pei Mutloka.
Ki provincial Chairperson ya Hospesa Mona Free State under the umbrella of Medusa.
I am provincial Chairperson of Hospesa here in the Free State under the, under Medusa.
Medusa.
Medusa, my apologies.
Eh, I have some concerns regarding the implementation of NHI.
Kina li di ngongo reho tzei tzei malwa ka hu petaha tzebe tzea NHI.
Critical post in the healthcare system remains unfulfilled.
Hunali di hehu tze shokolosi tzea msebezi. Tze ilongori leka jenlina hadiso ka di fu mani la ba twa ka di sebe tzea.
Eh, post-retirement subsidies. That retirement, retired workers get from the government. That was in their contract. What is going to happen if implementation of NHI does happen? What is going to happen to the portion of the subsidy?
Ki ba tla lo vuta hori na ha. NHI is a king epeta tzea ike nyatsebe tzeo. Hotle tzea langka di chalete kapama kriliya di tzei tzeo. Kapana ra bisandi subsidy. Ho, ho mulemona ba twa ni basabele tzea muso na ku nyefiteling. Na ban tzeba grofu mana di tzei tzeo ze nono.
Eh, I'm also concerned with the central management of NHI.
Ki weela ki ngongo re iswa ki tzea ma iso ya buharin ya NHI.
Seriously considering that the government sometimes couldn't even manage SASSA, grant payout. That is also under central management.
Ntze re shewa ntsaya hori. Muso uile wa shule ya hola olasasa. Ilongori iwe la tlasa da ulo ya buharin.
So for NHI to be effectively and successfully implemented, there must be challenges, current challenges that the Department of Health in the public sector is facing. There must be eradication of those challenges. How are they going to be eradicated?
Hori, NHI itle tzebe hu atlea. I petaha tzei ka tzeanel. Re klama apelia rekale ka ho lukisa. Di pepe tzeo tzei tenhajoale. Tze ilongori le fa palabu pilo bohutle na lezo na. Klama ekale mondiro lukisa joan di pepe tzeo tzeo ze na lezo.
Those current challenges, that are shortage of staff.
Di pepe tzeo tzei kinyele tzea hushoka basabele tzei ba lekani ba bu pilo bohutle.
Long queues.
Me la e me lelele.
Delapidated infrastructure.
Me ahok kapadi sebe tzeo tzei butlaming.
In conclusion, on behalf of Medusa.
Ha ki petela ike meding kapato monya Medusa.
Medusa remains supportive and remains supportive of the NHI principle.
It, it tze la hutie tzea lea no tzebe tzeo la NHI.
It also welcomes the initiative by the Department of Health.
Iwe la eh ananela wito iko benzo engeli fa palabu pilo bohutle.
To extend the universal primary healthcare.
Hu atolu sa di tzebele tzeo tzei tlasa kapata ma thoma tza bu pilo bohutle.
To the population of South Africa.
Ho bohuloba ba twa Afrika bohwa.
Which is anticipated to, which is anticipated to be both affordable and accessible.
Ilongori lebele tze hori. Itla ba di chao tze tlasa. Tze hon, mi di chale tze tzea teni kla hona fu mani wa ike bohoshe.
We acknowledge and take cognizance that the cost of primary healthcare has been spiral and outrageous levels, making affordability more and more challenging for the people of South Africa. But at the end, we support NHI. We say it must be implemented.
Re atze babilere ananela ntsa hori di chao tze tze.
I thank you.
Di chao tze tzele tzeo bu pilo bohutle. Ntze dele hu dimu me bohuloba Afrika bohwa basa honu di fu mana. Me ka hori ma mona hori re tzei, re tzei sa NHI. Kialibo.
Good evening everybody. My name is Joseph Maya. I'm from Metsumaholo. Can you hear me?
Tumela mboche. Libitola ka ki Joseph Maya. Ki tzea Metsumaholo eka ba la mku tza boche.
Yes, I'm a taxpayer. I'm an employee. And basically what I want to come and do here today and speak to you, the panel here, is that when we stand here and we say yes to the National Health Bill, we say yes to another increase.
Kei me mona.
Increase.
Kei me mona jalo ka mutu wa patanali heto. Ibe leki weela ki lemu sebele tzei wa muso. We ma mona hori hara eh ya tzei tzea NHI. Re klaberere eh ya tzei tzea hori huye ke tzei di di chao tze tzei tenha.
Government needs money. They need funds. And that's why here you want to pass the bill. And as I've learned in life, nothing is free.
Muso osoka chalete. Ki ka hona utile mona ka jo yenu. Osoka chalete, osoka letrili. Me ba 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 tla reto tumela utzei sa NHI. Mpa ilu ibona basoka ntsalete. Twey ekitutile nyana bu pilo. Nkura ona tze tza mahala bu pilo.
I'll make an example quickly. And you need to understand the problem of economic growth.
Ki tzea Moshala kaputla ko. Hori lo hona hutu si sa bu tata ba holo ya muru.
If I take hundred rand, I take it to shop right now or any shop, fifteen percent or fifteen rand is going to government.
Hankan sa hundred rand da hona jena. Ka ya huyo na holo rekali benke len kapaka lakaka shop right. Di presentete le shumele muzumishan. Di presentete fifteen di tro ya muso.
And it affects all of us sitting here.
Me hala melaboche waru na ba duzimona.
If I take this exact hundred rand.
Hankanka yona hundred rand teneki tze rinka tzeo.
Now I'm talking to the people sitting here.
Leki weala ba twa duzim fatmon.
If I take this hundred rand now.
Hankanka hundred rand teneki tze rinka tzeo.
To fela petrol.
Holo tze la petrol.
You're driving taxis, you're driving the skoro koros. We need to go everywhere. Thirty-eight rand is going to government.
Ha ki tze la petrol olos korokoro. Nsa ka se ki tzea mani kaso na. Thirty-eight rand day, hundred rand day. Ha ki tze la petrol eh ya muso.
How do we get to that? Do you understand?
De fitile joan bo ebomona. Na la ugrisi sa parela eri duzim kayo.
You've got the levy for the petrol and the industry. You add the road accident fund percentage. It adds up to thirty-eight percent. Which is thirty-eight rand is going to you, government.
Re na, re na le le di chao tze ilongori. Di ya kapaka la petrol eh ya muso. Me hu du ma mona nzo kinyele tzea le road accident fund. Thirty-eight, thirty-eight rand day yona eh ya holo na muso.
So if we break it up easily to explain, twelve rand is going to RAF, Road Accident Fund.
Twelve rand day, hundred rand day na eh ya ho Road Accident Fund.
Where's the Road Accident Fund? It's the same as what you are trying to do now.
Eka ho Road Accident Fund eka jenule. Eswa na handle na tzele wa eleleka hu yesa kaje.
It's bankrupt.
I putla.
There's only few that benefit from RAF.
Ki bam, ki bam malwa ba fu mani na mulemo hoo tzeo RAF.
So if we agree to the NHI, yeah.
Ha ka tzei tzea NHI eka jenulemo.
This is your paper.
Ki pampiri alone.
Ki Public Health Before Private Wealth.
Eh ring. Di tzebele tzeza bu pilo bohutle tzea se chaba pele. Hu di tzebele tzeo za bu pilo bohutle tzea private.
It's a lie. It is public health before private interest.
Ke le shanu. So na na se bulela hori. Di tzebe, eh di tzeo tzezaru na mulemo pele. Hu di tzebele tzeo tzezaru nse chaba mule.
It just becomes another fund for a bottomless pit of corruption and mis, maladministration.
Ki mu hafe la omu hape o leka hu atolu sa. Mukotu aluna osa hoza fale ngomi haro. Oh otla tzele tzei bubodibo sonze boleting.
We don't have the resources. Personnel, healthcare, primary healthcare, ambulance service, clinics and hospitals.
Ha re na mi chodi. Ha re na di chalete. Ha re na ba sebele tzea bu pilo bohutle. Kanale ma tata di klinikin di biteling lebu tata ba di ambulances.
So we do have a big problem. Where do we get the money? And how do we, as government or parliament, want to implement the NHI to standardize everything?
Re na lebu tata buhulba tze ba ni lebo na. Ko ba, ko re na rinka chalete ka e. Mi lo ripeta tzea NHI joan jalo ka muso kapo parliamente.
So we're looking at the wrong area for money.
Ha ba tla chalete tulungye fosha hetzing.
If we look at the GDP of South Africa, it's seventy billion rand. Seventy billion dollars.
Ha re shewa ntsaya TTP.
GDP.
GDP. Me le ngori ki seventy million rand tzei sebe tzeo.
Seventy billion.
Seventy billion.
Dollars.
Dollar, ya di dollar ra tzei sebe tzeo.
South Africa is the biggest or the second largest economy in Africa. So we are big, ne?
Afrika bohwa ki na ha eh na le muho. Omuholo eh emo babu bedi. Na eh kontinenta ya Africa. Honu ho gonsa kani tze refela kala na ha eh hole.
The biggest economy in Africa is Nigeria. Do you know that?
Muho omuholo kaufitisa Africa. Ki wa na ha ya Nigeria.
Nigeria is having a GDP of hundred and forty billion dollars.
Ah Nigeria eh ya zaji. Ipe di ya hundred and thirty-four billion.
So what I'm getting to is the economy is not growing.
Seki leka hu situtu ba tzea ko waru na hau hole.
You need to look at statistics South Africa, your department, and see where the problem is. We are having a growth rate of zero point six percent.
Otlamia le sheve di leze di pati, di pati, di pati si so. Le sheba hori na bu tata bu ka e. Muho aru na hau hole. Uh holea feela kapresentete zero point twenty-six percent.
No, zero point six percent.
Zero point six percent. Ki ko ba tzea kala.
So these red alarms going off from 2011.
Honali bu tata wo bohulu, wo tzuakasla masa 2011.
The South African GDP has dropped from four hundred billion dollars.
GDP Africa bohwa eto uile ho twa ho four hundred billion dollars.
From last year.
O twasle monse fiteling.
Three hundred and eighty-five billion dollars. So we've dropped by fifteen billion dollars per year.
Ilaya twasle monse fiteling tuileka three hundred and eighty-five billion dollars. Ho gule la hori. Fuku tzeile hapeka fifteen billion dollars. Selmolesle.
So in terms of growth, we are not going somewhere.
Ha twa ho holo ya muru.
We are going back.
Re, re chekia lamrao.
We are going backwards.
Hutle lamrao.
So the other thing that I want to come back.
Ntchag me ki ba tla ho tze la huyo na ki yena.
We're talking about inequality. It's there and pro, and provides us the equality system like what you are offering the prisons. We've got murderers, we've got convictions inside prison cells. Those people are treated. And you must benchmark from your clinics there.
Ntcheo me resa wing kayo na ehri papanyezanyona. Ki kokeo ya tka tka no. Ya hori hara tzeare ba tu ka ho tzeana. Ha re tzeare ba tu. Tzeanalaka muho re tzea kandi eh ba tzearu aba mani nidi changkani. Ba ilongori ba tzearu akamuho obetiri lo fetaro na kantla kamo.
So the people in our hospitals are eating bread and soup.
Ba tu ba, ba ku di biteli. Ba fuwa bohobe le sopho feela.
The guys in prison, they get three meals. Meat, anything they want.
Kana koe, kana koe ba ba tzearu cha kani. Ba fuwa di jo hara ru kala tzeati. Ba ja nama, ba ja ntcheo me lungwe ba ba tla.
If you are sitting there, you've got the funds. You can afford medical aid. You can afford, you want to buy something that you want. Don't come and force us what you think we want.
Jalo kali duzimono li na le chalete. Ya wye tze antcheo me lungwe le ba tla hu yesa. Lo hona hori kantcheo me lungwe le ba tla hu reka. Leske la tla mona la ba tla. Ho turehati la oru kobe la oru tzei tzei. Twe ba tla ngelo.
So if you look at the competition law.
Ka hao shewa mula wa di kru disa no.
So the act is clear on competition.
Mu mula onu otu tzebe tzeo. Kanale krisanu tzea ma iso joan.
Government can't control everything. And you want your fingers in the pie in everything.
Ha ona muso ka ba tla olala. Ntcheo me lungwe ibe. Uken iken hooshe mon.
You've got seven hundred and more state-owned enterprises which is not working. The only one that's working is SARS.
Le na li di entity kapadi khoru. Tze nyani tzea muso tze seven hundred te. Tze sa sebezing. Ilongwe sebe, engwe feela sebe tzea nyeling SARS.
I want to almost wrap up.
Senze ki tla petela joal.
I've got a solution.
Kina le tara lo.
The solution is you're coming to us asking for funds. Where do we get it? You promise us Lotto Health. Lotto Health.
Litle horu na mona likro ba tla likro le horu na. Renka ka yeta le. Le re tze pisat di tzebele tzeo tza bu pilo bohutle tze karing Lotto.
And we promise you we will buy more Lotto tickets.
Me ona ebe re le tze pisaru. Tla reka di dikiti tze tenha pe tze ngataza Lotto.
We've got fifty-eight million people in South Africa that buy Lotto.
Kanale ba twa fifty-eight million Afrika bohwa ba reka Lotto.
If one guy pays two rand to contribute to the fund, we are funded.
Ha ba mutu eh mutalemga reka Lotto agan sa. Two rand da hoo tze chalete niya dikita hai. Chalete no kare tusawo re fale krili. La sugimesena. has inherited huge debt from the white supremacy minority government. There's a challenge of infrastructure that needs to be taken care. For an example, here in Metimahulu, we only have one Level One District Hospital. And I hope the HOD of Health in Free State, even before the introduction of the NHI, can take care of this one. Chair, our people are dying. And road to Grand Start and Blue Fontaine. at some point, it does not... Let me make a typical example. The X-ray department on holidays and during the weekends, that X-ray department is not working. And a minor procedure that can be done by a Level One Hospital is referred to Grand Start. We therefore humbly request that the HOD and your team, you come up with a plan to build a second regional hospital for Metimahulu community. Precisely because of the triple challenges of our people, which is poverty, unemployment and inequality. You can understand that if somebody is from Refenghot, where I come from, his or her patient is in Grand Start or Blue Fontaine with no money, that person must... How will that person go and visit a patient there? So we therefore demand that we have a second regional hospital in Metimahulu. In closing, we are saying the NHI must have watchdogs for general practitioners. Because the Health Professional Council does not work for us. So we need the NHI in its introduction. The general practitioners are taking money for poor people and for procedures that they are not even trained for. For an example, a poor person will go to a GP, private GP for that matter. For a scan or either for a city scan or pregnant women for just a scan. A sauna. And by law, that private GP must have a certificate which you should have trained for two years to can administer that procedure, but it's not happening. So hence, we are saying we need NHI to look into that so that our people are not ripped off. We therefore support the NHI hundred and fifty percent. I'd like to say us the poor, we support this NHI policy. But I would like to make one statement. That says, we will not allow our government to point the fingers at it by the people who know very well that... Now, there is no pause to allow her to interpret. We don't follow what we are saying. I'm saying Tembaku Beka Clinic, Denisville. Where people are being assisted by the mobile clinic. You will not see affluent people or people who are financially stable there. That's why they are coming here to say it's only about money. Our government wants money from us. We know where we are coming from. And I will never forget where we are coming from as people. I'm talking as a person who's working for the municipality. Medical aid, my medical aid is way too much. I've got a grandmother who's eighty-six years old. For her, I must ensure that she gets the quality healthcare services. As I said, I'll be short. Will not accept to be misled by people who got money. I'm supporting that our government may implement this as of yesterday. Revolutionary Credit Leadership. Let me align myself with the established protocol. We are saying, my name is Kyatle Hile. My surname is Ramato. Ramato. I'm from Velcom in Lijuli Puta District. We are saying today to the government that we must defend NHI. And the constitutional principle of the right to access the healthcare. So far, we welcome the strides made by our government, more especially the Department of Health. We are saying NHI will help to mitigate all the struggles encountered by the public health sector. I see stipulated in this document that we'll be able to procure or to build structures where need arises. But there's a caution. Implementing, you need to focus on the following. That we need to accelerate access to healthcare more especially for rural communities. Mobiles are there, but you don't cater them. You find people who have to travel ten kilometers just to access a mobile on that day. Also are saying, we need to better improve medical equipment in our facilities. Also, for us, it will enable the poor of the poorest to access the medical specialists. We are saying also, the department now of health, we are not catering for the diff at our facilities, our institutions. I was impressed when one interpreter was sitting there. But we are saying in our facilities, those people struggle to get access. We are hoping NHI will also address that. Chairperson, keep on doing the good work. We are behind the implementation of NHI. I'm greeting all of you today. I greet the committee there in front. I'm in the clinic committee of Machabey. I heard all the facts you've said about the NHI. It's promising. As I continue to read this bill, I hear that there will be many subcommittees. I also want to know the role of the clinic committees in this NHI. Because I believe that we won't get a successful implementation of NHI without the support of the clinic committees. So we want to know the role of the clinic committees in this NHI. Because you have heard that the hospital boards receive stipends. So we do need stipends as clinic committees. We have had many meetings in Velcom with the leadership about the issue of the clinic committees. Why are we not receiving the stipend? Where is our appreciation as volunteers? As volunteers, don't we have needs? Or we are just objects to be used? We also have needs as people who are assisting the Department of Health. We plead with you or we request you, Chairperson, to forward our... Another challenge is the maintenance of our clinics. When we have a problem of leaking toilets, we call the department or the unit responsible in the municipality. They are not responding and we keep on calling them. There's also a shortage of water in the clinic. And you know that if there's a shortage in the water, there's going to be a big problem. There are sick patients. They are also expecting mothers in there.
Kibatu bateban hanke.
By the people who know very well that.
They are good beneficiaries. Oru honale batoa oruna batoa badula eh the hospital atarona.
There are people who are in our hospitals or our clinics.
Tellurang, kibatu bapu. Howka, atamshala feela. The same temba kubeka baba buankaya ona. Howka ya monu line ya eh eh mobile clinic. Ukebe wa bona bato banan 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 libuhoni line entate.
If you can go to the third clinic, you will not see.
Now, there is no pause to allow her to interpret. We don't follow what we are saying.
Okay. No, kiri, temba kubeka.
I'm saying temba kubeka clinic, Denisville.
Mobatu, batusuwaiki mobile clinic.
Where people are being assisted by the mobile clinic.
Ukekebe wa bona bato banan banan libuhona monu.
You will not see affluent people or people who are financially stable there.
And that is why baka ota mona ona baribulale. For our government, it it it's only about money.
That's why they are coming here to say it's only about money. Our government wants money from us.
Retiba me retwandi.
We know where we are coming from. And I will never forget where we are coming from as people.
And kibuachena kilemsebeleziwa maspa.
I'm talking as a person who's working for the municipality.
My medical aid ampola ya.
Medical aid, my medical aid is way too much.
Because kinalungkhona eighty-six years.
I've got a grandmother who's eighty-six years old.
Ekitamleken shore because. Ekenjeket kikenshore otoala eh eh eh. Eh elfe eh eh tanswarela. Otoala tebeleto teenke tawupi.
For her, I must ensure that she gets the quality healthcare services.
Eski sekutuwa mukutsonyane.
As I said, I will be short.
Are to do me lotetuwa. Lotuwa na lichelit.
Will not accept to be misled by people who got money. As one of the poor people.
La nolaleka la sappotene. Oru musa oru implemente es yesterday.
I'm supporting that our government may implement this as of yesterday.
Revolutionary credence leadership.
Kiyadu medisa wetabili.
Let me align myself with the established protocol.
Erici gamahanya leza myshoatrompo ishwanetzing.
Was saying, my name is Kyatle Khile, my surname is Ramato.
Kyakikatlehile.
Ramato. Ah Ramato.
Ah Ramato.
I'm from Velcom in Lijuli Puta district.
Kitoa Velcom Lijuli Puta district.
We are saying today to to government that we must defend NHI.
Reha rehumusorolo kela utireleza onemonliemon.
And the constitutional principle.
Leza myiso kapoza myiso amula oteo.
Of the right to access the healthcare.
Ya tu kela ofisela tawupilo bobo.
So far, we welcome the strides made by our government.
Hahonajualere anane la mehatuinkuinkimu soarona.
More especially the Department of Health.
Ah hulholo lufapa la tawupilo bobo.
We are saying NHI will help to mitigate.
Reha NHI tlatusa hofukuta.
All the struggles encountered by the public health sector.
Di pepezo zosleze sheba zeoza lufapa lamuso di shebanenlezo.
I see stipulated in this document that we'll be able to procure or to build structures where need arises.
Jualoka hatokomanina ishalosa horatla hona oreka lueza di teoze shwanetzimodi kloko di ba bona alanti.
But there's a caution.
Impa ilitzila atloko mediso.
In implementing, you need to focus on the following.
Harikenya tsebezongolo kela otepa mahote la telan.
That we need to accelerate access to healthcare more especially for rural communities.
Haloke la opotlaki sa picheloya tawupilo bobo tla holo batombama hayin.
Mobiles are there, but you don't cater them.
Di klini kiza di koloinya na di teengi impa hadi.
You don't cater them.
Hadiba tusi.
You find people, you have to travel ten kilometers just to access a mobile on that day.
Kanakongo utafumana batoa zama ten kilometers ulika ofisela odimobile klini kizzenzete entazinle.
Also are saying.
Meha peren.
We need to better improve medical equipment in our facilities.
Haloke la ontlafasa di sebe diso tawupilo bobo tle di tinzaroon.
Also, for us, it will enable the poor, the poorest.
Hape huma tla faza bafutana.
To access the medical specialists.
Hufumana di specialisti oza bo ngaka.
We are saying also.
Haperere.
The department now have, we are not catering for the deaf at our facilities, our institutions.
Halishoko mele di kloko tavozebe tutu.
I was impressed when one interpreter was sitting there. I see that he just left. But we are saying in our facilities, those people struggle to get access.
Mererehe batoa sa ukring haba ile di tinza di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tla huvimor bafumanite sebeletoze shwanetzin.
We are hoping NHI will also address that.
Meretseparo NHI tla shebanalata wazena.
Chairperson.
Mndulasstulo.
Keep on doing the good work.
Zalapileza msebezongo.
We are behind the implementation of NHI.
Sehetza ginyatsebezongo NHI.
Kyatkyadu medisa tati lena.
I'm greeting all of you today.
Kidemisa committee eka pelekamani.
I greet the committee there in front.
Kilenta tchauwe ota Velcom.
I'm tchauwe from Velcom.
Kika committee ya machabing clinic.
I'm in the clinic committee of Machabing.
Jale kubedi ntlaka ofera te ba tabe bawa na ba diwilemona ka kaya onatave na NHI.
I heard all the facts you've said about the NHI.
No, dia tsepisa.
Eh it's promising.
Jale antekebala, antekebala eh bilena.
As I continue to read this bill.
Eh huwa huwa kaka kadi komiti te fapa fapani.
I hear that there will be many subcommittees.
Impa nekebata oteba owoleya ya ya di klini komito onaki efimona o o national health insurance.
I also want to know the role of the clinic committees in this NHI.
Obani kicholawa na haranofmana eh eh national health insurance eh eh ateling kantewo klini committee.
Because I believe that we won't get a successful implementation of NHI without the support of the clinic committees.
Jale kavatla oteba ona hantlima emo ayona itlaba afimona o national health insurance.
So we want to know the role of the clinic committees in this NHI.
Obane rauta eh di di hosdi hosdi hosital board otona di di difmana eh eh stipend. Jale logonagas okopa es klini committee.
Because you have heard that the hospital boards receive stipends, so we do need stipends as clinic committees.
Monore because kila kila raswadi meetinze ngata Velcomomani. Le leba leleba itapeleba onaka onatave ya klini committee.
We have had many meetings in Velcom with the leadership about the issue of the clinic committees.
Yes, obani obani onakasafmanis stipend.
Why are we not receiving the stipend?
Kifmana kava ya ona onaka kebkebkebkebaut kebka itaupi.
Where is our appreciation as volunteers?
Impa jale kubosa ona jale ona akile baba itaupi, harena itloko na.
As volunteers, don't we have needs?
Kapo onaka kido kido objecte feela te 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 la sebe diso feela.
Or we are just objects to be used?
Obani logonaga na itloko. Jajalo ka ka kaba tupa ba baba sebeza monu. De fapenonu la la.
We also have needs as people who are assisting the Department of Health.
Jale kai okopa mndulasstulo aga aga kafi ti setepi lokona.
We we plead with you or we request you, chairperson, to forward our.
Jale ya ya ubedi ya ubedi ki maintenance, our maintenance, molet klini tzaona is very poor.
Another challenge is the maintenance of our clinics.
Harena luta taba di toileti te te dutlang rafrafuneela de fapenani kapo funeela maspa. Kapo di 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 pipi te 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 dutlang, okay.
When we have a problem of leaking toilets, we call the department or the municipal, the the unit responsible in the municipality.
Well, ha 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 ba respond to. Keta nareba funele baba tala.
They are not responding and we keep on calling them.
Le mezi biloga ashoka lakamani ka klini keni klini kiasna mezi kibata tabojoan.
There's also a shortage of water in the clinic and you know that if there's a shortage in the of water, there's going to be a big problem.
Obani kanalabatoa kula kanalabatoa esika monu.
There are sick patients, they are also expecting mothers in there.
Baba oso ashoka la mezi.
Who need water.
Me jale baba 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 swanana kutisaka kapaka la onatave na mezi.
And sometimes they are returned back home because there's shortage of water.
Obana mutata bo bafumana.
That's the challenge we are facing.
Jale tabengwe ya ya ona under maintenance.
Under the maintenance issue.
Eh di 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 klini tzaona di adi adi ma emo ama atle.
Our clinics are not in good condition.
Jale ka emo mea emo asasabule.
Like another lady has already talked about it.
Di 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 jarete tzaona kanidi kanidi di fele kanidi kidi jareti. Kijon bobobo holo feela, harena baba tupa ba.
The premises are very dirty. You can see the tall grass there.
Ebele me wa ona elele meni jaga wa ona. Aba 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 ipoko tell ante shelta. We ra bato ba 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 bato kutajuan kamonu kantwe kamonu.
The clinic manager is popping out money from her from her own pocket to see to that the the yard is clean.
Jale kwanamutatabiwa mshomokubu kesebe na kaba eh eh NHI onana kanidi kataba te unisipata tla isana.
So that's another challenge that I would like to know how is NHI going to help with it.
Impa tege, te se eh bo mele bonatati basa 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 filoso na kido ova 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 overcrowding.
Another issue is that one of overcrowding that has already been mentioned.
Di 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 klini tzaona di dinali dinalabato ba ngata baba badi bata nguzona odufumana di sebeletoza.
Our clinics have got many people who are going there to access the healthcare services.
Jale okopa kanidi komiti ke kloko mele obani kanidi obani kara kanidi di ya shota.
We plead with the committee to make sure that the shortages that are there are alleviated.
Le staffu kia hola komiti ya tseba kanidi oshota staffu. Kike tava etleze mona.
There's also a shortage of staff in these healthcare facilities.
Jale akewona ona rekav 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 fmana eh sebeleto eh eh ateling arishota kliniki. Bilaperereshota le staffu.
So I don't see how we can get qualitative healthcare services when we've got shortage of staff in the healthcare facilities.
Enape neke okopa ke 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 sebelezo ya staffsa ona manese leleba kudi.
I'm also asking for the security of the healthcare workers and the nurses in these healthcare facilities.
Obani kikudula kakara kakara karsa shava se se kuatile.
Because we live among the community that is very angry.
Obani baba ngabafitla man kliniki manimomoxwezanting.
Some when they get to those clinics or the clinic where I'm working at.
Baba tla baba tla baba basa baba baba baha li fele feela.
They come being very angry.
Ababato oblelo ababata we na. Obata baba tla ababato oblelo.
They don't want to be told how things are done there.
Obana baba tla eh ho ho huetoka mu obana baba.
They want to impose their views.
Joke kito na tabatine kuatola isha.
That's what I wanted to present here. Thank you.
Now that the chair, the person or the committee member is here and he's got issues that can still be attended to by the head of department. He is lucky to meet him. Let him come this side. So that he can be empowered as a committee member. How to assist his clinic as a clinic committee. He must come this side and speak to the HOD.
Eh ndatejalo kaha olasi thosa komiti ya di kliniki ebele otlilemona. Neke okopa oratumele HOD ya di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tle province inka pelekamonali bisane. Ah ushalo sezohorana lekaba lesa abo joan jalo kadi thosa komiti di kliniki.
My thinking is that the clinic committee member must be better than the ordinary member of the society.
Kalohanyo akoka ba mhopo laka gore. Sitosa komiti ya kliniki haseswaneli mutu efuka ba fewa elinga hi sechave.
He must provide answers and some of the answers can come from this meeting through the HOD.
Wotlama oni halana kadi karabo odigongwa roza hai me di karabo zen du HOD.
Thank you, Chairperson and honourable members of the committee for the opportunity. It's been a long light and I know I have the graveyard shift here, um being the second last person.
Kialeboha di thosa chavani muifo monen dafling. Eh ebelele zazileleleha holo sebeleki trobuai kile si buisa se se la telan se tla pete.
My name is Roy Junkelson. I am from Westlam in the Tabamo Futsanyani district.
Le visolaka keloie Junkelson keso amanene battle hammer. Battle hemi Tabamo Futsanyani sitirikinsa Tabamo Futsanyani.
I just want to start off for the record by indicating my concern that there were only two public hearings and that the one in Tabamo Futsanyani was cancelled. So I presume the committee will accept that I'm speaking on behalf of the couple of hundred thousand people who weren't heard by the committee in Tabamo Futsanyana.
Erici kaleka ngongore hoyaka yapele ele mhorre. Hovile fele ali di bizoyaza sechabazepe di province. Obanene bizoyaschabamanene di sitirikinsa Tabamo Futsanyan ile ya ya skayanka sebaka. Me ki ememona ki emezidi kiti kiti zaba toba Tabamo Futsanyan basafuma namunyetla. Wahore bala isadi peso zabon.
Another area of concern, Chairperson, is that these public hearings weren't adequately advertised on the ground. I only heard about them through the political structures.
Ngongore umwe happy mndulasstulo gore di bizozena za sechaba hadiaka dababatoa hantle sechabe. Lenakurulemo yenfeleki sekurwa kaba kalawore ki sebanale batoa mehatuwa di politik.
Chairperson, I don't have an eloquently prepared script like some of the other presenters here this morning, some of whom are or this evening, some of whom are sitting next to the HOD there. Um I'm going to just make some comments on what the chairperson said in the introductions.
Mndulasstulo haki angola pullepo eh 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 khaslisa inka peva eh kiemsesemohkalisaa. Jalo kadi poze lenza bua. Ki ba bamba di thosa sechabaze duti mona pe la HOD eh eh kajeno lena na kitile hotlabua kase wilwenki mndulasstulo.
Chairperson, I want to start off by commenting, the chairperson started this meeting by saying that the NHI is going to bring free healthcare. As far as I know, healthcare in South Africa is already free for those people who require it.
Mndulasstulo kadi leka hori NHI itlova di sebeleto zamahala. Tawupilo bobo tle homa Afrika Bora. Hoyaka zipoyaka di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tle esenza ili di sebeleto zamahal.
Chairperson, that means we don't need NHI to bring free healthcare to the people of the country.
Hovulela mndulasstulo harichoki NHI hori ritlo nyehela batoa barona. Di sebeleto zamahala tawupilo bobo tle.
The chairperson also indicated that NHI is implemented all over the world. There are some countries that do implement NHI, but most of these are first world countries.
Mndulasstulo weze are NHI sebe diso le fatse inka bo par. Impa kiri honalidina hatze ma lata sebe disaing NHI. Medina hatze nizele onoga di sebe sa NHI akakatle. Kiri na hatze ono redi muruwongoi ike mezing ohotzing hand.
But let's look at what makes these countries different to South Africa.
Harishaba hori na iki ngieza ona hatze na difapanele Afrika Bora.
The first thing is most of these countries have a very stable and strong tax base. South Africa's tax base, as we heard previously, is dwindling and South Africans are already overtaxed.
Papa angure di na hatze na dinalilele heto lele onoga lema tla fetse bileli ike mezi. Hamona Afrika Bora eli heto la ona likweka ebele esenza renan tla hori bato. Bahulela chalete angaeta yale heto basa hono we lefa.
The countries where it's been implemented effectively have very strong administrative systems in place. They don't have the corruption that we have, they don't have the state capture that we have. Um and the the people who implement healthcare do so effectively.
Dina hatze na na hadina butata ba bubodu borinalebona mona. Ba lema nyofonyo farinalelo ona mona. Habana ba emo asstate capture kapo hacho hana jalo kago ona. Ebele banali ketapele handle ehroka bubodu.
Another thing that separates them from us is they have very strict immigration policies to ensure that the citizens of the country benefited from this, from NHI and that illegal immigrants don't abuse the system. In South Africa, we don't have that in place. We have about four million plus, I think much more, illegal immigrants, many of whom will abuse the system.
Klayo we happy koribana lema ano ahantla tizi len ahola olamela ta nahenyaro na kapama twankle. Me ilintrares na nyona mona Afrika Bora. Hajwalere na li ma twankle afita four millionina henyarona. Vegezwa ngore bakana basabe disa eh leano lena nakamu khausa twanela. Nahenzenuze di imbanitza zahore bato ba. Dina hatza bana batla pele mele mele ma twankle. Hassebe disi di sebeletozenza NHI kabulshazu.
And Chairperson, I want to explain how easy it is to abuse the system in South Africa. In Tabamo Futsanyani district where I'm from, the Setzoto mayor was deported in December because she's an illegal immigrant. So she fooled Home Affairs, she fooled the electoral um system and she became mayor of that municipality until someone caught her out. So if you can get through that system, how easy isn't it to get through our healthcare system and abuse that system?
Mndulasstulo Erico bonse na hobohbebe joan orabatwa tla kika ni zalano lenala NHI. Weeza mshalamanitabamo futsa sitirikinsa Tabamo Futsanyani mokezwanthe. Eh meya ra wa setzoto. Wele ahutise zwa nahenyaha bo obani kiri lezwanthe. Me onea ANZ di bampiri zasing zamla ohotla nahing. Ava aropa leza mesoya di heto re a a ketele ele meyar. Me hono hobonso re. Ha ebene wila babu bebe hoyana hori atla kaka ni ze mohua zameiso nahenyaro na honzo bana halawre. Le ma twankla ma honzo tla babu bebe hori ba kaka ni ze leano la NHI.
Chairperson, the last thing I want to mention regarding the other countries and the other issues I'm going to deal with is that those countries also have effective systems and institutions in place to deal with corruption. South Africa does not have that in place which opens the system up to abuse. We know from media reports that last year twenty-two billion rand was lost to the healthcare system as a result of fraud and corruption.
Mndulasstulo Afrika Bora yemele esnama anramatla la olam bubodu. Ra zwa horasle monse fitilen lefa palabu la bupelo di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tle. Lilela laselwa kisha telekanali two billioni kapaka lazameiso bushazu ale ma nyofonyofo alefa pen.
The chairperson indicated, linked to my previous comment, that the minister will appoint the board. Well, I read two days ago in the in the media that the minister appointed his niece who allegedly was involved in corruption. So if the minister is already involved in nepotism, how can the minister or any government official be trusted to appoint a board and a CEO?
Kajeno lena ni taben kudloho tule dona lilela la hetan kapala chwaya. Muchana hai hori ebene mowa ba sebezi lefa pen. Me kudlo mndulasstulo hakala msebeziwa lizazi are. Le tona ikilona le tla hetan di thosa lehotla. Ha ebene tona lohonawleze bubodili hi re muchana ona hori ebene sebeziwa bupelo bobo tle. Ki ngitla ntefaleza ono tla hetaba tatoa shwanetzin oribe garolo yale hotla la NHI?
The NHI has also been forced on us. If it's implemented, it will be forced on us, which will take away our freedom of choice to decide which healthcare we want to use and how we want to use it.
Rikobe la hori ringke NHI resebeze NHI. Ha ebene rikobe la re amohela NHI ritzeze. Senesitla akusatu kelo ya ona yawi hetala ona rabatla sebe disa. Le ano lefi la la pepe loya di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tle.
The NHI plans to destroy private healthcare. But there is nothing in the bill that tells us how the NHI is going to fix the public healthcare system. And we heard a lot of comments today on how that system is failing our people.
Me kiemseswa NHI kiutla fedisa. Di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tle zapra feze impa. Hawana morishalo sezongo re na NHI itloka na joan huluki sa. Di pepezo zirenalezo ana hautwa di sebelezo za sechaba tawupilo bobo tle.
Chairperson, contrary to what some people said today, the NHI is just going to be another state-owned enterprise. And we have experienced through the Zondo Commission of how state-owned enterprises have been subject to state capture, corruption, and how they've been abused. There's nothing that says that the NHI is not going to be another state-owned enterprise that is going to be abused by all the others. And the biggest problem with state-owned enterprises and the abuse of it is the effect on our economy. Our economy is in dire straits, we're facing downgrades, huge unemployment because of the way, among other things, that the SAES have been managed.
Mndulasstulo eh kibatla ohanyo zana lebata nese ba wilemonana. Bansebar NHI high global emwe ya di entiti za muso kapo duka ba za muso. NHI ANZ egro tshana lezo ona. ANZ egero ba SOI leona. Elon hori lere ikutrela lu hipone la maneni komishi ni ya Zondo. Hori bubodu bi kenewo lokae ma nyofonyofo ale muso ona ona mangata holo kae. Lo rinaleluta tabona ba state capture. NHI leona ANZ egrofela elebo emo botshana. Libona bo refumanan di hwebo za muso dilohozon dilohobon.
Chairperson, if you want us to support an NHI, what we ask of you is first fix the current system. Show us that the current system can work and then come with a new system.
Mndulasstulo hebo tlore okopa retsete NHI. Ki okopa huipeleza hoyana kahore. Kala peleka uluki sama emo ditaba hajwal. Rebonse hori na zamiso ya bupelo ya di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tle. Hajwal ekalu ki so joan ekantla fazo joan. Me hasenese atelele rebonore di ntoa di lukir oka pete haza NHI.
Chairperson, I'm not going to repeat everything that other people mentioned here this evening about how this system is failing them, the lack of medicine, the poor infrastructure, the poor management, the lack of healthcare professionals, the fact that some of our best hospitals in the Free State have become glorified clinics. We don't have to go into all of that, but fix that first.
Mndulasstulo haki batlo pete pete. Senese siwileki di buize tlen belo hona. Di shalosa di pepezo zogatova na lezo na hajwal edi pepezo oza ochloka eh kalafoele kaning. Butata ba hori me aoli di sebe diso za di petele di aputlaama. Le hori hona leza meso eh bushazu. Di petele nza ona moe longori petele zaronasabuhari di sebele di sebeza ekareki di kliniki. Haki to pete senana ze wilwenza zameise bushazu. Ya di sebele tawupilo bobo tle za hajwal.
Secondly, Chairperson, government needs to implement policies that can improve our economy and our tax base. Because we don't know where the four hundred million that this might cost us is going to come from. And we don't even have the final amount, but I think the current amount is about four hundred million that is spent on healthcare in South Africa. And even Titu Emboweni has questioned the economic viability of the NHI.
Mndulasstulo. Ntengi kaya hotaleza onkore. Otlama muso kala peleka ogi ngama ano azhebezo aile onore. Atla ni defaza ona le heto leza meso handle. Obani harazbona di jeho za likrili zena zali krili lena relefumana kai. Hawsewa hori NHI itloko sa chalete ele kanale four hundred millioni. Exatsi benaradwengaka kai. Lele tona didombo eni wile aboza. Hori na me kiemseswa NHI kia fe mi ikrotsi zwa kadi chalete di fe.
Chairperson, we want our people in the Free State and in South Africa to get the best healthcare possible because they deserve that. But what are we we asking is that we strive for universal excellence, not universal mediocrity.
Mndulasstulo rabatla batoa ona Afrika Bora le Free State taba fumanse. Di sebeleto tawupilo bobo tle se ma emo ahantle. Esing mitlaena ANZ i i i shaloso mona.
Chairperson, I don't support the NHI. I also believe that the NHI is just another election gimmick because when government and the governing party gets into trouble, the first thing they do is come and bring something new to the people and say, "This is going to fix it." Well, it's not going to fix it. We know that from experience. Thank you.
Mndulasstulo haki tsiese NHI. Ki nana NHI ki mohomon happy. Wahore muso obusan osonzo obatla hobukeleza di hetu di votu zawatu. Eh haki tsie haki tumelu re tla pete so kalebo.
I'd like to just mention that we we note and we.
I'd like to just mention that we, we note and we, we are very appreciative of the previous speaker's input coming in from another district, which is too far and I don't know how long we are going to be travelling to that district. But we took a decision on Friday to cancel public care in Tavamofuzanyane based on a report that we're receiving from those who are, who have led us, who have gone before us from parliament. So it was too late to rearrange to go to another district, so we cancelled it. We just hope that there could be another process, maybe by the NCOP. But I like your last statement, because in your last statement you spoke in a singular. You said, "I don't support NHI", which is therefore meaning that you were really joking to say you are here on behalf of the whole district. Because we were not going to take your comments as representative of the whole district. We're going to really accept your comments as yourself. Thank you very much.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
Let me start off by greeting, everybody who's here, by greeting parliament, greeting the minister, all the representatives from the Department of Health who are present here today.
My name is Tandiewe Mahwasi Buhudi. I'm an employee of the Department of Health from Lijuli Puzo district. I would have loved to say I stand here in support of this bill,
as it really sounds great on paper. But however, considering the state of our health facilities, I do not, I cannot say I support this bill.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa. So that at the end of the day, I don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
Most of, the things that were already mentioned here are, are, are correct indeed. As most people have already stated that, in order for the bill to be implemented successfully, we must firstly start by fixing our primary healthcare and carry on with it, improve it up to a point where we are able to implement a complementary service. As a public servant, I feel that this is where we should start, by fixing the current challenges.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
As a public servant, I've also experienced the challenges which have been mentioned here, that our primaries, health, primary healthcare services are failing us. We have challenges with the infrastructures, we are struggling to function. Simple things such as making a copy is a struggle, so things need to be improved first.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
There is no such a thing as we do not have enough public servants who work as nurses. We have a lot of public servants that are staying at home, qualified, but the department is not employing them. For instance, there are about 10 of them who are currently working and are not receiving the salaries or stipends, and the department is not doing anything about this situation. We have more than enough public servants who are willing to work if they were granted the opportunity to do so.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa. But they are not receiving the notches that they are supposed to receive as yet. They are still on the previous notches of being enrolled nurses because the department says that it does not have money. They are being, going to pillar to post, trying to get what they rightfully deserve. Because at the public clinics, they are working as professional nurses, but they are not getting what is due to them. At the end of the day, this affects the morale of the public health workers. So how are we going to provide the quality health service that the NHI wants us to provide if we are not getting what is due to us as healthcare workers? At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
My request is, before we start talking about implementing NHI, let us start by addressing the corruption in the Health Department. That some people are appointed, we do not know how were they appointed. They were appointed through political appointments. There are some people who are looking for jobs that are not getting jobs. So before we can talk about implementing NHI, let's start by rooting out the corruption in the Department of Health Services.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa. At the end of the day, the patient is the one that suffers, is the one that has to go from pillar to post. And at that very same time, I end up having to use my own resources to refer this patient around because the contracted cell phones that we are using at the clinics run out of airtime before month end.
We also have a huge challenge with our referral systems at the clinics. For instance, I have to refer a patient who's based in Walcom to a hospital in Virginia, and that patient has to come back again to receive services at a clinic in Walcom. These are some of the issues and challenges that we have. We lack resources to a point where we as public servants end up using our own personal resources to assist patients in order for them to get the services. The referral system is a great challenge in, in the Health Department, particularly at the clinics.
Even our higher levels of care fail our patients this much because of lack of doctors that are experienced. Patients experience IUDs while they are still in the hospitals admitted because there were not enough doctors to attend to this patient. Patients have to end up protesting in a hospital because they were booked for caesarean section, stayed there for a whole of two weeks without being operated on because of lack of doctors. Patients queue for hours and hours in high-risk clinics because there are no doctors to attend to them, there are no sewing machines that are working. So please, before we talk about NHI, let's fix the problems that we have currently. We cannot say we want to put another story on top of this building whereas the one that is down here is dilapidated, it has cracks, and it will just end up falling. Thank you.
Can the, can the last speaker, can the speaker indicate whether you are making a general statement with regards to the IUDs in hospitals or there's a specific hospital that you want to help us to understand about the IUDs?
Okay.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa. The patient comes back to me with feedback of what happened. So these are the things that my patients, some of them, experienced. The hospital that I'm talking about as I'm standing here is Bongani Hospital in, in Walcom. So I'm talking about the experiences that my patients relate to me, that they experienced while at that hospital. And unfortunately, it is our higher level of care whereby our high-risk patients end up.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
Because it assists this committee, you are fine, you can then take your seat. It assists this committee when we are doing our oversight. Among other things would be to get to know a full report about Bongani Hospital. But the HOD here has got a chance to go and take these issues up at that hospital that may not have to wait for us. So it's very advantageous, head of department, to be in these meetings because while our people are making their comments about NHI, they get a space to ventilate about some of the issues that are currently happening now that may not have to wait and you can actually assist to sort them out. And we also, as a committee, would find space and time to say to you on this 29th of January, in that hall we met, these are the issues that were raised, how far are you in terms of resolving them? And it also allows this committee on its own to make visits to these facilities and raise issues as they have been brought up.
At the end of the day, we don't have any healthcare access in Africa.
Thank you very much for this input. We have recorded, taken notes, and we are going to make this part of a bigger pool of comments that are coming in from all over the country. Some of them that we are still going to listen to. May I find, may I get a volunteer who's going to close for us in a prayer?
Shall we all say the grace, may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, and the sweetfulness of the Holy Spirit rest and abide with us. Keep us safe in journeys. In Jesus' name we pray, we ask, and we thank you. Amen.